Looks like it's four o'clock and we have all the commissioners assembled here. All the meeting of the March 1st, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order and request from staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act, Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll proceed with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here. Thank you. I, before we have our moment of silence, I would just like to extend our sympathies to the families of Courtney Anne Hoffman and Carlton Jones, two citizens who died unexpected in violent deaths this week, and we'll be keeping you in our thoughts. And with that, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We don't have any awards and proclamations which will take us to Citizens Forum, and I assume that Jacob will give us his brief instructions on how to participate in a Zoom meeting if you're so inclined as a member of the public.
I'll unmute myself first. Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. If you're interested in participating in the citizens' request to speak, if you could raise your digital hand, you could do that by going to the bottom of your screen and hitting the Participants tab. Once you've done that, the box should open up and you should see your name. You can either click on your name or click at the bottom. There should be an option to raise your hand, or if you've got a camera, if you just want to wave at us, we can pick you up that way. If anybody is interested in speaking now, if you go ahead and raise your hand.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt. We're also supposed to provide an explanation of executive session and how that works regardless of whether we have one on the agenda or not. So I can do that if you'd like, or Mr. Wood?
Please, I'm.
So despite joking about the possibility, we don't have an executive session on today's agenda, but nonetheless, whenever that should occur, much like we did in a physical format where the public stayed in the room and the participants in the executive session left in a Zoom format, the public participants could stay on the call. A side room would be developed by the meeting moderator, which is the Deputy City Manager. The participants in that executive session have the opportunity to log into that separately. Executive session would be conducted at a appointed time. We would then come out of that executive session, chat room or side room, and return to that main call and pick up where we left off. So from the public's perspective, they wouldn't need to do anything other than stay on the line, wait while the executive session is conducted, and then the governing body would rejoin that first call that the public was on all along.
Thank you for the reminder and for the explanation, Mr. Scrag. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during Citizens Forum? We'd ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less, and please be sure to identify yourself both by name and where you're from.
I don't see any raised hands at this time, Mayor Hodges.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, Mayor Hodges. Did you want me to report on COVID?
I did. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem, and happy to do so. I did, do have some slides that might help to graphically show what I've been verbally reporting previously. As you may recall, the county puts out COVID statistics on more than a weekly basis, but just for the point of consistent comparison, the information that I'm reporting is based off of the reports that come out on Friday. So this would all be based on information as of February 26th. In terms of new cases, you can graphically see there the decline. The high point was September 5th, 197 new cases in a week's time, and that's progressed down to 106, 59, and most recently 55. So as of last Friday, there were 55 new cases reported in that intervening week. Jacob, if you could go to the next slide. The next one is active cases, and again, you can see a decline there. This, as of last Friday, there were 699 active cases compared to 1,179 a week prior to that. In terms of the next slide, hospitalizations, again, a downward trend. It's kind of leveled off in the last couple of weeks, but we peaked at 34 within this reporting period on January 8th. It declined, and in the last couple of weeks, both this past week and the week prior, there were nine individuals hospitalized that we reported for Salina County. And then lastly, deaths. This graphic is a cumulative total, and so we are currently at 106 deaths as of last Friday. And that's all that I have to report. Those are kind of the standard indicators that we've been tracking and I've been reporting to you and that the Health Department's been reporting on.
Well, it's really, really gratifying to see those numbers decline, and we'll hope that those, that decline continues. And thank you very much. I really appreciate that, Mr. Scrag.
I had a quick question. Mr. Scrag, is the current mandate that's set by the county, is that in effect to what, March 21st?
March 21st, and had a conversation with them this week. They set that timeframe around two COVID cycles, and so that's how they ended up at March 21st. And at the moment, I think they're still remain committed to letting those two cycles run. We have weekly conversations that they, our conversation today acknowledged that other counties are increasing their mass gathering numbers and things are changing, and the conversations will be ongoing. But at the moment, it looks like they're planning to carry forward to that March 21st date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, might make one comment, you know, it's great the cases are down, active cases are down, current cases are down. But last summer, on August 21st, the weekly cases were at 23, and we had 85 active cases. So we're still quite a bit above that. And you know, that active case count is kind of the, what I want to say, the bellwether, the indicator of how much, how much potential there is for reinfection in the community. At least that's the way I interpret it. Maybe Dr. Davis, Commissioner Davis, has a, has a different interpretation. So I think we have to remain vigilant because this thing is going to cycle and cycle and cycle, you know, until we achieve significant vaccination levels. And even then, you run the risk of, you know, mutations that will bypass the vaccine, just like with the flu. So I would caution against too much exuberance. I think it's great. I think it gives us a chance to make some decisions and perhaps lighten up moving forward, but we're not out of the woods.
Absolutely.
Your comments, Commissioner France reminded me as well, at Mayor Hodges' suggestion, I extended an invitation to Jason Tiller, and he's got on his calendar to address us directly and the governing body directly on March 15th. So we'll put him on that agenda.
Thank you, and I appreciate you reaching out and, and making that, extending that invitation because we haven't had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Tiller firsthand, and I thought that it might be a good idea in case some of the commissioners or members of the public that watch our meetings, but maybe don't watch the county commission meetings, would be able to ask their questions and get, and get an update from him. But in the, in the meantime, please keep wearing your masks, practicing social distancing, and washing your hands because as, as Commissioner France noted, this is, this is far from over, and we need to do everything we can to mitigate our risk. Any, anyone else in regard to COVID? With that, we will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing for 2020 Special Assessments Projects. Item 5.1A, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 21-11053, leveling, leveling special assessments for improvements.
All right, we will go ahead and open.
Mayor, before we get started, this is Commissioner Hoppick. I will need to, at this time, recuse myself from this item due to a conflict I have now.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Hoppick. We will open the public hearing, and I will turn this over to Dan Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is a carryover item from February 8th, where we got the breakdown of costs for these projects and schedule of public hearing for today. And second reading would be after we have the public hearing. So this sets the stage for our bond sales for this year and to start paying off these projects that were completed in the last year or two on our, for our benefit districts. It looks like the March, today's the special, is the hearing. April 5th would be the bond, authorizing for the bond sale, and then April 12th would actually be the bond sale, second reading ordinance. Those are the kind of the big dates that are coming up after this. Ollie, I'll be here for questions.
Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Stack? Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Raise your virtual or physical hand if you'd like to ask a question or make a remark.
No, I don't see any hands, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Ryan. I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 21-11053, leveling special assessments for improvements.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 21-11053 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick. Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 4-0, and we will invite Commissioner Hoppick to rejoin us for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we have to close the public hearing, or does it stay open? I can't remember.
Did I, did I say I closed the public hearing before we took the action? Yeah, I forgot to say that. I'm sorry.
I can't remember. I just wanted to make sure so we don't have to worry about this later. I just wanted to make sure. If somebody else heard it, maybe I missed it.
And I may have forgotten to, it may have been one of those dialogues that I have in my head, and it actually makes it out to where people need to hear it. So what would you recommend I do? I'll look to Mr. Scrag and Mr. Bangston to.
Yeah, I think all you have to do is the mayor's declare that the public hearing is closed and.
All right. All right. Well, with that, I will declare the public hearing on ordinance number 21-11053 is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve the minutes from last week.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2021. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 21-7937, expressing the intent of a governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas to the proposal by Salina Net Generation.
All right. Mr. Cotton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges and members of the commission. Chris Cotton here, Director of Parks and Recreation. We're here today to discuss a resolution of support for the efforts of Salina Net Generation. As you are aware, the state of the tennis courts in the Salina Park system continue to deteriorate. Over the past, over the last few decades, Parks and Recreation staff have come before the commission to recommend repairs of the existing courts. Those repairs were made with the best intentions, and each repair would last a few years before the repairs failed. Those repairs have failed in the most part due to the condition of the subsurface and not necessarily through the repair efforts of the several companies that have come to Salina to try and resolve the issues. The condition of the tennis courts has been discussed several times before the master plan project was started, and several times since it was completed and accepted by Resolution 187581. There was a strong turnout by the tennis community for the public input meetings regarding the master plan, and meetings about the tennis courts have taken place before, during, and after the master planning process. This is what leads us to this meeting today in which Salina Net Generation would like to see a resolution of support for their efforts to move forward a new vision for tennis in the city of Salina. After the presentation given by Salina Net Generation on November 23rd, 2020, the city commission voted 5-0 in support of Resolution 20-7903 to declare all areas within the boundaries of Kenwood Drive and Midway Drive located in Kenwood Park to be eligible for naming rights. This resolution was passed in an effort to help Salina Net Generation raise funds for a new tennis complex in the heart of Salina. Located less than one half mile from the new downtown hotel, this facility would help contribute to not only increasing room nights during tennis events, but will increase downtown foot traffic much in the same way the fieldhouse has. Currently, Salina hosts high school state championship events for football, baseball, softball, basketball, wrestling, volleyball, and golf. Of those seven sports, six take place at city of Salina facilities. Adding a state-of-the-art tennis complex would enable the city to host seven of eight state high schools championships, enable Kansas Wesley in access to an outstanding facility to grow their programs by having access and a facility that would allow them to bid on the Kansas Collegiate Athletic Conference championships. A new complex would also allow the tennis citizens of Salina the opportunity to once again have nice courts and be the hub for redevelopment of recreational tennis leagues and lessons. As previously discussed, the cost to the city to rebuild the existing courts as they lie today would be in excess of $1.2 million, whereas partnering with Salina Net Generation and USD 305 would result in an estimated total cost to the city of $864,600. While it is recognized that tennis was not listed as the, at the top of the priority list, it is recognized that the tennis courts are an issue that need to be addressed. Section 2 of Resolution 19-7730 shows commission support of the master plan and specifically makes mention that proactive and responsive maintenance that will prohibit further deterioration of certain features and amenities, as well as responding to emerging needs or priorities may change the order of repairs. The next step in this process would be for the city commission to adopt Resolution 21-77937, which would formalize the support for the efforts of Salina Net Enterprises. This project has seen support at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board level as well, and this will help the fundraising efforts of Salina Net Enterprises by solidifying the commitment of the city to help rebuild the tennis infrastructure in Salina. As the information in the blue sheet packet is lengthy, at this time, city staff would like to ask the commission to formally adopt Resolution 21-7937. Staff has prepared answers to the questions asked during the November 23rd meeting, which are contained in the packet. Both staff and members of Salina Net Generation, specifically Clark Renfro and Samantha Angel, would like to open this topic up for discussion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's all right with the other commissioners, I'd like to invite any members of Salina Net Generation to speak. And I see Ms. Angels and I see Mr. Renfro. So if you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. And I do see Mr. Gillespie has his, has his hand raised, and I.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know who's going first. I'll let Mr. Wood tell us that.
It looks like you're muted yourself, Jacob.
Okay, Mr. Renfro has the floor right now, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Gillespie, or if you're both part of Net Generation, however you want to do that. It's okay with me, you know?
Okay, thanks, Jacob. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity again, commissioners, for SNG to be able to come up and bring this to, to the commission. Want to point out, and on Chris's kind of introduction, introduction on the, on the project, the, you know, our ask is essentially 600,000, and on the total, I think we had the demo costs involved of the pool and, and the rodeo arena. So obviously, that is a, a cost. But when you look at pure comparison on, on courts versus what it would, would cost, the, the city certainly wanted to bring that to the attention. But nevertheless, appreciate the opportunity. We've got a tremendous opportunity, I think, here for the community to have a venue, have a, a project that is a pure and, and true community asset. We really do not have tennis courts right now. We're at a point where it's a safety and a liability issue, and I know the city officials have indicated that being brought to their attention by insurance carriers. So we're really looking at not only a need for the community, but really a safety and a liability issue that needs to be addressed. And we have, and our group have, have addressed and have had a great dialogue with the city and of course, our partnership with USD 305 to address this issue really over the last three years, even prior to that, with another administration bringing this to the attention of, of what needed to be done. Tennis is a sport, I can tell you, that has been part of the community's DNA for probably over 60 years, both at the youth and adult levels. It's a high school and a middle school sport, and certainly a college sport with Kansas Wesleyan. It's a, it's a lifelong sport. It's, it's, you've got people playing in their 80s and 90s in this community. You've got males and females playing well into their 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s on leagues. You've got a strong youth program here, both at the private level and at the public level, and both boys and girls. So it's, it's really something that's been a part of this community. It's hard to put, you know, a priority on something like this because, as we know, there's lots happening with the Parks and Recs and needs. And, you know, one of the things that we want to try to bring out is, you know, this is truly an impactful resource and opportunity at a minimal expense, we believe, to the city based upon the funds that have been raised so far on this project, which is nearly 1.3 million. And there's more to come. A big part has been the, the ability of the city to give us the, the naming rights, which we deeply appreciate, and that was a big, a big push, and certainly will continue to be that as we, we get through this. So we all know that Salina, in my mind, is, is the best community on the planet, you know, whether we have tennis courts or not, it is. But we'd have a huge hole to fill if we don't have community tennis venue. And I think any community that is, is strong has those types of opportunities, and we believe that that Salina needs it and the community supports it, and we have the dollars to make it easier and to help the city out to make that happen. You know, a story was told to me recently, as a middle school, their first day of practice, their girls' team spent the first day of practice pulling weeds from the middle of the court. And, you know, we want to have sports or, any sport is, is huge for development of kids, whether, whether they choose tennis or basketball or whatever. But it's, it's kind of embarrassing when a community like Salina is so proud and so strong, we're at a point where a team has to spend their first day, a kid's youth team has to spend their first day pulling weeds from the middle of the tennis court. It's sad, and, and we have the ability to, to get that fixed. It's a sport that grows, is growing. I know it was mentioned in the study session, I got a chance to stand on that, about some of the venues in town that sometimes you can see them being used and others you cannot. And I believe tennis is certainly a venue that because of the conditions of the courts or lack thereof, you don't have the participation. And I can speak anecdotally for many that people don't go out there because it isn't, it is a hazard, and it's a liability. And USTA has indicated to us that they cannot hold events here because of the court's conditions. So our, our position on this is it's a community need. We're not claiming that we're going to bring in the US Open or Wimbledon to Salina. That will be a supplemental side note to this, where there, there'll be a potential to bring in events. But first and foremost, I think we need to address the needs of the community, which is we have no, no community tennis courts. And, and to take that a step further, probably close to having to condemn them to a point where it's, it's a liability to the city. So we're in a position, I think, to, to bring this across the finish line. We know it's not easy. We know you have, there's lots of demands on the city, and I don't envy your, your position, but I do think we're, we're in a position here to provide a wonderful opportunity for the city to do something that on their own would be significantly more difficult. And I think you've got the, the citizens in the, in the community of Salina willing and able to, to make that happen. So again, appreciate the opportunity to present that, and I know there's, there's probably lots of questions, but we look forward to, to bringing this across the finish line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Renfro. If I could ask you to, to stick around for a little bit in case we do have some questions when we get to the commissioners and, and members of the public. Mr. Gillespie, are you speaking on behalf of Net Generation or as a member of the public?
Well, I'm a member of the public, so maybe raise my hand briefly here.
Okay, then we will, we will get to you here shortly when we have the public comment portion. Ms. Angel, are, would you like to speak on behalf of Salina Net Generation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to dovetail quickly onto what Clark said. I too was in, on the study session and was listening to the comments about the increase in use of the disc golf, pickleball, the increase in use of that, and then the trails. I know just at the club where I play in the last year, they have more than tripled their participants in the 10 and under range. And in the last six to nine months, I think we've added 20 to 25 new adult players ranging in age from 25 to 55, and they're all playing at least once a week, and the kids are all playing once or twice a week. They would play more if we had public courts, and that was available to them for, for more time to play without the charge of having the private club where we have to pay for court time. The committees worked hard, but I did want to thank staff because they've really worked their tails off in helping us get this in front of the commission. So I want to thank staff and then thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners for considering the project.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. I will look to my fellow commissioners. Any questions for either staff or for the representatives from Net Generation?
I have a question for staff. Commissioner Davis, if you look on the Park Master Plan, at 137 is a walkway around Centennial Park, which I would assume would be relatively inexpensive. At 147 is the, we get the first thing to address the tennis courts. Neither one of those are in current, but when had we planned and how had we planned to get the 1.2 million that we would have needed to have carried out, item number 147? If we were doing it ourselves, that we were going to upgrade the courts we have already?
That, that would have had to come out of the park sales tax, sir.
And financed over time.
So in the hierarchy of, of planning, you know, those projects were the greatest bang for the buck. Now, when would that have naturally probably have occurred?
Well, I think you've identified a disconnect in the Park Master Plan. Well, I think you've identified a, a disconnect in the Park Master Plan priorities and budget and maintenance. From a, from just from the Park Master Planning numerical ranking of them, it would put it somewhere out in the future quite a ways. The, but deferred maintenance has already caught up with us and I don't know that it would, would have been practical to progress our way through, you know, unless we either limited the courts or, or shut them down till we could get to them. So I, I don't know if that's answering your question, but that priority list was not all inclusive. It didn't have all the answers as related to when maintenance needs might arise nor where the funding might come from. It was truly just kind of a first pass at trying to prioritize everything that was identified in the Park Master Plan based on those, those criteria that I articulated earlier.
Right, I mean, I, I, I share Mr. Renfro's reasoning for why, you know, Salina needs a facility, no doubt. You know, if our courts are a liability, you know, we, we can very easily shut them down. If we had not otherwise planned to, I mean, if they weren't usable, wouldn't matter whether they were sitting there and not usable, whether we ripped them out. It's still a liability issue, but still. To save us $400,000 of money that we hadn't planned to spend this year is not really saving. It's like, wow, I bought this dress on, so look how much money I saved you. I saved you $700. No, but you spent 400 to get it. So you actually spent $400. Were we planning on spending this money? Now, because we, we just got finished talking about, and I'm not, has nothing to do with the, I, I love the project, don't get me wrong. But we got paid for it. Where is this? And we're paying for something that we ordinarily had not planned. And, and I've noticed every couple of years we get a great generational bargain that bumps everything on the CIP. And then, and downtown probably wasn't generational project. But, you know, we go through this process and then we rip the process up every couple of years. If we got the money, it's no, no big issue. I'm just wondering. Where, where, because if we approve this, we're probably getting ourselves $864,000.
Yeah, and the staff report goes into detail of how that, you know, that question came up when we, this was, this request was last before you. So staff's tried to address kind of where the funding might come from. And, and when I get done here, I'll defer to, to Ms. Pack and Mr. Cotton to walk you through that. And I don't disagree with your characterization of projects and opportunities or needs arise that cause us to, to change our priorities. I, I think the staff report touches on it and we discussed it the last time it was before you. I do think this is a little bit unique compared to a new project to be constructed whole cloth in that we did, we undoubtedly have deferred maintenance challenges ahead of us that in regardless of, of cost and regardless of prioritization, we're going to find ourselves having to address. Can't say that we, as part of that Park Master Plan, had funding identified for all those items. But I think if you set aside the Park Master Plan and just, you know, let, let the clock run, we would find ourselves in a situation where we're doing Band-Aid approaches, for lack of a better description, at expense that are very short-lived and would just repeatedly be making spot repairs to no one's satisfaction. But Debbie and Chris, do you want to speak to the, the financial aspect of it and the, the fiscal note in the blue sheet?
Sure, I can if, Jacob. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, thank you. This Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Some of the information that we provided in the blue sheet was basically where we are in some of the funds that we would anticipate this project being funded out of. The Parks Department, Parks and Rec is funded through the Operating Fund, the Special Parks Fund and through the Sales Tax Capital Fund, as we just spoke about earlier. The Special Parks Fund currently, we are budgeting a fund balance in that fund of $442,000. And the reason for that is over the past couple of years, we have not been spending money out of that fund, just waiting for the master plan and things like that. So it's been kind of delayed. So we, as a couple of the options that we provided, we suggested using part of that funding for this particular project if you so chose to approve it. The other place that we found funding would be available is in the Sales Tax Capital Fund. When we looked at the historical spending out of that fund for parks, which we had initially said in the, in the 2016 tax initiative would be $500,000 annually, which over the last four years should have totaled about $2 million. The parks, we've only spent about $897,000 on parks. So that leaves about 11, 1.1 million dollars that has not been spent. And with COVID and the reduction of spending that we did last year so significantly, we're anticipating the fund balance in that fund at the end of 2021 to be about $5.5 million. So we felt like there was some availability to, to utilize those fund balances to possibly fund this project. One of the options was to do it totally out of cash, and this would be our recommended option, would be to take all of the demo costs and the cost to, to take out the courts and the pools from the fund balance of the Special Parks Fund, which would leave it about $35,000 in fund balance. And then if you chose to fund the $600,000 cash commitment, we would take that out of the unspent funding of the Sales Tax Capital Parks funding, which would leave that, that amount still would be over $500,000 if we did or did not choose to spend that. We also, also could have the option of financing part of this. We looked at possibly financing $100,000 only because that number fit into the budget of the Special Parks Fund. But we could certainly look at funding part of it through debt financing, but that's really not our, our recommended option. We would recommend that we, we do this project if you wanted to, to support it out of the cash balances of those two funds.
My next question has nothing to do with this project specifically, but if we've got this cash, how come we didn't replace our 32-year-old truck out of the same cash?
Sorry, you broke up.
How, how, how come we haven't replaced the 32-year-old truck sitting down there? If, if, if we have extra money sitting in the rafters, why, why is this money not being, some of it anyway, being diverted for urgent needs? You know, we're going to need to pick, cut the grass around this tennis, so.
Historically, we, we segregated those funds. So we've, you know, we talked about where the vehicles and equipment were funded from, whether they were there from the department, the general fund or the Sales Tax Fund. And so if you remember that, that broader spreadsheet of the, the Sales Tax Fund, there's a number of columns in it. The $500,000 allocation was marketed as part of the, the Sales Tax Initiative and it's been budgeted for parks improvements. There's a separate and distinct column out of that same Sales Tax Fund that is what we've been using for vehicles and equipment. So we've, both in terms of the way that it was marketed and the way that it was structured, we've treated those as separate and distinct funding sources.
All right, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions or, or comments for staff?
Mayor Hodges, could, could I have a second to address something else that Mr. Davis asked?
Certainly, go ahead, Ms. Hodges.
Mr. Davis, you, you'd asked about, about budgeting to repair the existing courts. And one of the things that's been discussed is, is I could, I could put the money in the budget. I could have a budget request to fix the existing courts as they stand today. However, those, those same cracks will, will be back within two to three years. So it's just money that, as, as, as Mike had mentioned, it's, it's just a Band-Aid. So if I put $55,000 into repairing Oakdale Park, I'll be back in front of you in two or three more years asking for the same amount of money to fix them again because the subsurface is so bad, they continue to crack and fall apart.
Have, have we ever considered just shutting down those courts completely? Just bulldoze them out and and that, and replace them when the money is, you know, whenever this item would come up in the Park Master Plan?
Admittedly, we've looked at this as a, as a facility and programming that we needed, needed to maintain. I don't know that at the staff level or the governing body level, there's been discussion about just kind of stepping away from offering tennis in the community.
Commissioner Davis, did you, did you, did you have anything else at this time?
No, I'm listening to the rest of the discussion.
Okay. Any of the other?
Commissioner Hoppe here. I have some comments, but I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner France, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Yeah, no, no questions here for staff. I think I understand the proposal.
Okeydoke, thank you. The only question that I have is just in terms of the demo that is proposed in, in, in the outline as it stands. We had, I know that we had been presented with a proposal to use the former Oakdale Pool as a, a plaza, a peace plaza of sorts. And had told those organizers that that, that wasn't a possibility. And I guess I'm just wondering if in terms of looking at demo versus repurposing things, I'd like to continue that discussion if there's a use for the old Oakdale Pool that, that we can find. And I just threw out the peace plaza. I mean, there's, I'm sure there's other things that it could be used for as well. Or if the surface of the tennis courts at Sunset Park are sufficient to repurpose them for another use, I would ask that rather than wholesale demolition, that we take into consideration any adaptive reuse that we might be able to have for, for those facilities anyway. I mean, obviously, the Kenwood Pool, rodeo grounds. What was the, and my other question is, what about the clubhouse rehab? I, I couldn't remember. What is, what is our stake in, in, in the clubhouse rehab?
Our, our facilities maintenance department would, would repair that and reopen it.
Okay.
To, to answer your, a, a little bit more information on Oakdale, specifically, most people recall it was the, the main use when it was filled in in the night, late 1950s was to repurpose it as an, as an ice skating rink. However, in the 50s and 60s, the space was also used for community dances as well. So at one point in time, it did have other uses than what it's being used for today.
And we certainly can look at repurposing. Another conversation I think we've had at the governing body level is repurposing some of the tennis courts for the River Festival or, or retaining some of that surface for possibly food court area, something like that.
I think that's just a, a conversation that I'd like to see, you know, ongoing. I don't know that, you know, that's included. I didn't see it mentioned in, in the resolution of support for today, but I, it's something I would like to, to, to keep in the back of our minds. And I know that there would be an issue with the Oakdale Pool, the former Oakdale Pool does have an art installation on it. And we've heard from Mr. Anderson in the past that there would be a specific process if we were to change the surface of that, that we had to deaccession, you know, that artwork, contact the artist, et cetera, et cetera. So I know there's a, there's a process there as well that we need to be respectful of.
Mayor, I, I think that's a wonderful idea for repurposing that way. And we would not necessarily be under any time constraint. I mean, repurposing that land would not interfere with construction of the tennis complex, would it?
No, sir.
Yeah, Oakdale Pool, Oakdale Tennis Courts would not interfere with the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I know that Mr. Gillespie had raised his hand earlier, if he's still available and would like to speak.
Do you have access, Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, yeah, I do. I'm happy to speak here. Yes, first of all, I'd really like to thank the city commissioners for all the efforts in making and addressing the need for some sort of quality public tennis courts in Salina. And also to the Salina Net Foundation for all their project efforts in developing what I believe is a meaningful and hopefully affordable win-win response to the problem we have of the deteriorating courts. I'm going to be a little bit redundant in some of my comments, but I, I thought it was important to point out some of our, our own experience with the public courts. I and my family have been residents of Salina for over 40 years. And during that time, I've been a recreational tennis player and I've regularly used the public courts in Salina. I can say probably for over 95% of my own tennis playing and many others in Salina, from the young and the very old, very young to the old and the very old, would probably also say that the, that the courts they play on, the ones they can afford and readily access are those public courts. And as a really good lifetime sport, it's a popular one. And as such, I, I believe it will really remain so for some time. My youngest son was a high school tennis player here in Salina and he placed in the state all four years and was also a state tennis champion. And practically all of his learning of the game occurred on the Oakdale Courts. All of our family played tennis, some of us more than others. There's four of us, two kids. And since we were also a lower income family as we raised our kids, none of their tennis development would have been possible without those tennis courts that at the time, we recognized as a wonderful Salina asset. The court complex still is a special contribution to Salina life, but their playability now is clearly deteriorating and in some need. And safe and playable public courts is a particular need for the many of us regular and also occasional players whose families would otherwise have limited access to this lifetime sport. Now, I'm over 70 years of age and I play with those who are younger and older. And I always value seeing the many times when families and their children are hitting on the courts and using that special opportunity for accessing those public courts. So to me, the need for a solution here is pretty obvious. And I really appreciate all the work that all of you have been putting into this effort to date. But the second point I want to make, I think is also important. I want to strongly urge the commission to somehow include in the planning and to support a dedicated hitting wall, tennis hitting wall in whatever project solution, solution you finally agree to. This is so important for many players, but can be particularly important for the developing younger players. And that was exactly the case for me when I got interested in the sport when I was younger. I won't tell you how long ago that was, but, but it was also particularly important for my younger son, who played the, the high school tennis. We lived across from Husner when he was young and going to elementary school. And after school, he would very often, and for several of those elementary years, hit outside the building classroom wall, perhaps to the chagrin of teachers who were diligently working inside in their classrooms after school. And he would sometimes hit there until it was approaching dark. And he would probably say now, if he were here, that having that hitting wall of the building, which by the way is not there now in the remodeling, was very important in his own tennis skill development. And as for myself, and particularly during this pandemic time, while I've restricted my own tennis play with other, other people being extra careful about that, the present hitting wall at Oakdale has been a very important and a regular exercise and recreational outlet for me and probably for some others too. Even last week, this past weekend, and even this afternoon. And usually whenever the temperature was in the upper 40s and 50s, I would, I would go out to hit. And I know a, a, another player who hits in, when the temperature's in the 20s. So this is, people use it. And I have seen others hitting on that wall a, as well. And I should say that while I, I've been hitting on the wall, it was not unusual to see families and others playing on the, the courts that were playable there at Oakdale. And I also saw people getting lessons and getting. lessons and getting guidance from other adults and so on, even in a pretty chilly atmosphere there. So, having a hitting wall next to our public courts, I see is very important. It helped. Am I using too much time? I'll be done soon.
Yeah, if you can wrap it up, that would be great. If you want to hear, I know that there's some other people I can see.
Yes, sure. So, I just, this is excellent exercise for keeping one's skills in shape, waiting for a court to open, and so on and so forth. So, many love this sport. They grow to love it even more as they realize their ability to play the game at different levels still remains with them over a lifetime. So, I think we need a good and durable outdoor public courts for that, which can be played on most any time. And I believe when I'm saying all this now, that I'm really speaking for many past, present, and future players here in the Salina area who have helped to make this a tennis-recognized community. So, I just want to thank you all for your efforts one more time, and, you know, really appreciate your work. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Is there anyone else? I see a couple of raised hands, and Jacob will unmute you, and you'll be able to speak. Again, would just ask that you identify yourself by name and tell us where you're from.
Go ahead. Okay, Ryan Stewart, everybody hear me? See me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, and I would echo what everybody's saying about, thank you for all the efforts for this project. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about the situation for Salina South High School. And I have been the tennis coach, the girls' tennis coach at Salina South High School for 14 years now. And I'm starting my sixth season as the boys' coach, actually, today. I'm also the girls' basketball coach here at Salina South, so that's why I'm kind of running in and out of this meeting. And we have a playoff game tomorrow, too. So, you know, there's a lot of things going on. But this is definitely a huge, huge issue to me. I have, I'm actually starting my 33rd season, so to speak, and no, I'm not that old, okay? But the 33, with the fall and spring seasons, we've had, this is my 33rd tennis season. And quite frankly, on the south side, we have been fairly successful. You know, obviously, everybody knows how talented Salina Central has been over the years in tennis. But, you know, we've, in Salina South, we've done our fair share of winning, especially lately also. And here's what I know. We have four courts at Jerry Ivy that are technically ours. You know, they're not, they're the city's, but they're, you know, where we get to practice. And I have averaged, and I shouldn't say I, Salina South High School has averaged anywhere from 20 to 24 student athletes each and every year. And quite frankly, this spring, I've got, I have 28 boys that have signed up. I can't keep 28 boys with four courts. I just can't. We have four, and even honestly, with four courts, it's amazing. I've kept what I have kept over the years, because I'd like to give kids the opportunity, and I'd like to give more kids the opportunity to play this sport. We have times where we have to work on doubles almost primarily. We have, you know, we'll have three courts going on in our practices, and the fourth court, we're sitting there drilling with 12 kids as there's a doubles match going on right next to them. We have to warm up at times on the basketball court or the sand volleyball court. Honestly, it's just, it's rough, you know? And if you compare where we're at, like five and six A tennis programs around the state of Kansas, I guarantee you, we're towards the bottom 5 to 10% when it comes to facilities. And I would also say that, you know, and I don't know if I should bring this up or not, but I'm going to, our team has a nickname for a ball that hits the crack, and we have to replay it. And it's Jerry Ivy, and we call it a jivvy, is what we call it. And at any point, and it's kind of fun, you know, we've made it kind of a joke out of it, but if a ball hits a crack, and it bounces like it would not bounce on a regular tennis court, hey, you got a jivvy, it's a replay. And quite frankly, I joke about it, but that tells you exactly the condition of our courts. And on a couple of courts, you know, the service line is so deteriorated that if you actually hit a good serve, you'll have a jivvy every time. So I guess it's a way to make ourselves understand when we're hitting good serves, I guess. But bottom line is, and we need something more than what we have. And in part of those 33 seasons that I've talked about, I was at Salina South Middle School as the head coach for a lot of years before I took over the boys' job here at South High. And Sunset Park, as bad as Jerry Ivy is, is worse. I mean, it's way worse. There's three courts, it's nowhere close to a school, the gaps are literally three, you know, two foot big on some of those courts. And it's just, bottom line is, it's unplayable. Our district, our league, Ark Valley Chisholm Trail League, is a very competitive league. And I know Salina Central's courts are very, very nice, but, you know, comparatively to what we're seeing and what we're playing on for other five and six A schools, it's just, I mean, if they had to see what I had to go through each and every day, and I keep saying I, don't take that the wrong way, it's what these kids have to go through. And if I had more courts, I'm very confident I could keep, you know, upwards of 30 kids given an opportunity. And out of my kids, and I'll stop with this and let everybody move on, we have some very high-level players, for sure, and we have a ton of beginners. And we have a lot of beginners that like to come out. And I think that's fantastic. And I would love to have more room for those beginners to play. They could fall in love. And so what I'm trying to say is, we're not there just to try to worry about those, you know, top-end kids. You know, we want to provide more opportunities for every kid that wants to learn how to play tennis. So, that's my little, my piece. If anybody has any questions, please ask, and I'd be more than happy to share more of my experiences. So, again, I'm Ryan Stewart, and been the coach at Salina South for quite some time now.
Coach Stewart, Commissioner Hoppe here. I have a quick question. Under the new plan, I believe the courts at Jerry Ivy will be transferred to USD 305. And how many courts will you be having available to your players at that point?
Well, I'm sure that's undetermined. They haven't told me that for sure. I've heard the number six, I've heard the number eight. I can't, I would guess it would be in between there, but that's, I mean, there's no substantial number yet. But I would say no more than eight, and six to eight is what I've been hearing, at least.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Coach Stewart. I appreciate it and appreciate all the work you do with the students at South High, the student athletes. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Daley, you should have access now.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Hi, I'm Brad Daley, and my wife, Christina Daley, we're here. And we're here in support of Next Generation. So, our kids play sports through South High, through South Middle School. Clearly, there's such a need, and I'd like to thank Coach Stewart. I know last year in the women's, or in the girls' tennis, he ran two practices so that he could keep all those beginners. And he put in a lot of time to run those two practices. So, thank him. But I just hope you guys approve this as a commission. I think there's such a need for it, and Next Generation has raised the money now to help this project along. And I hope it does, because I know how difficult that is to get those funds pledged and donated as well. And I hope this moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. and Mrs. Daley. Appreciate the remarks. Is there anyone else from the public that has questions or would like to make a remark? All right. Not getting the, seeing any hands myself, and not getting the high sign from Deputy City Manager Wood, I'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or action.
Question, could staff just briefly summarize the effect the two different financing plans would have on our ability to spend on projects in the future?
Sorry, the ability to?
Spend on future parks program in the future. The differences in the fund balances, when you take out the $600,000 and the different amounts of money, did there be financing plans listed in the blue sheet, option one and option two?
Yeah, that's correct. The second option actually includes a debt financing option, which at the level that it's given is about $12,000 payment a year. What we did was we took out of that normal budget for the special sales, or special parks fund, it earns about $187,000 a year, with the anticipation, with the last discussion, that we would want to replace two parks a year. We thought that amount would be about $165,000. So that's why we thought it had the capacity to do a debt financing of about $100,000 out of that fund. That would leave the other portion of that funding out, into the special project fund balance, so that we could use it for some other need if it arose. The other funding option is to take it out of the fund balance that we currently have in there, that it's like if you have it in your savings, and you're going to, and you would be spending it now instead of saving it for some future plan. It won't affect necessarily what we have intended to spend in the next five years. So the numbers you saw in the study session for parks replacements and things like that, neither of these plans will affect that. We've accounted for that spending in the future.
All right. So, and that was going to be one of the two remaining questions. Those projects would be protected with either, either of them?
The parks replacement projects would be replaced, would be protected, as well as the $500,000 per year for the parks improvements from sales tax.
All right. And kind of a rhetorical question, what type of pressure do we need to hear from citizens in other parts of town to get less expensive projects done that are going to have large impact, you know, just for increasing their quality lines and vitality of the neighborhood? I'd really like to see us start doing something with Centennial Park, even if it means delaying during some of the demo work on, in this project.
I did want to mention that those three demo projects are ancillary to this particular project. So, they could be delayed, we could close those. But as we were doing this project, we just felt like they kind of melded together, so it kind of made sense to present it all at once. But there's no demand for that to happen today, but there is some security and safety need to have that happen today, or in the near future.
And Ms. Pack, how long of a debt payment are we looking at?
We calculated that over 10 years.
Okay. So that's well within the lifespan of the tennis courts, and hopefully, I'm trying to find it in the materials, what are we budgeting for annual maintenance on these courts?
That would be a Chris question.
It looks like he's trying to unmute there.
Yes, ma'am. For the first six or seven years of the courts, we would need to put a little bit aside for resurfacing the courts after that many years. But generally, maintenance on the courts will consist mostly of just replacing nets as the nets wear out, or occasionally having to repair lights. But the maintenance on the courts as post-tension cable courts should be pretty minimal.
But, Mr., thank you, Mr. Cotton. But like, ideally, what should we be setting back? Because, I mean, if these courts have, you know, a 20-year lifespan, shouldn't, I mean, just based on what we saw in terms of our park motor fleet, I mean, what, ideally, what would we be putting back each year in order to address those longer-term maintenance or reconstruction needs?
Commissioner Hoppe here. I believe on the second page.
I knew I saw it someplace, I couldn't find it.
They have an estimated, every eight years, they would need to spend $6,000 per court to.
Okay, I got you.
So that would be a total of $72,000 every eight years, so.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. I knew I'd seen it someplace. Thank you.
So that same $10,000 that's spent for debt financing could go into a SNC fund to resurface the courts?
Mm-hmm, yes.
If I might ask, the, you talk about financing options, but it doesn't look like those are referred to in the resolution. So I presume that decision point will come later in this process somewhere.
Correct. If we pass the resolution of support today, then we'll, that'll give Salina Net Generation the indication of support, and they'll continue to do their fundraising. We'll then put together both an agreement between the city and Salina Net Generation, as well as the rest of the details that we're talking about here.
I, does Ms. Pack have something to say?
No.
I just saw your square light up. You know, I would say that from my perspective, I'm really pleased that we're going to get something done with the, let me see if I can get my terminology, with the Kenwood Park Pool. That should have been done years ago, filled in something done with that facility. So I'm glad to see we're moving forward with that. I am, you know, I struggle with the idea that we do a Parks Master Plan and it has certain priorities, and then we step into the plan, and suddenly it seems like it changed. You know, the baseball project was not there, but suddenly we're doing it. I mean, it was there in pieces, but they were 10 years in the future, and the same thing, sort of things happening here. But I also realize that those sorts of things have to be flexible, and that whoever the consultant was, and whatever citizens they talked to, you know, probably had good intentions, but it's not necessarily written in stone. So we have to be a little bit flexible in that regard. And certainly, having some private investment to partnership with, you know, adds a certain amount of attractiveness to the project. So, I, you know, I would have to say that generally, I don't have a problem with the project. I think that it's a good thing to proceed with. We clearly have issues with the existing courts. You know, when you're having to warm up on sand volleyball courts, that just doesn't strike me as a good tennis warm-up, even though I'm not a tennis player. But I do know that it's a sport that's relatively easy to participate in. People can do it with a relatively small investment. And, you know, it's, I've done it a few times, and it's fun. I'm no good at it. But, so I think I would be generally supportive of the project.
One question, as we provide for the total 860,000, that does not obligate us to do the, or earmark, does that money have to stay earmarked just for those specific demo projects? Is that money that we can massage and, you know, like repurposing the old pool that's been filled in?
The $864,000 does not include those three ancillary projects of demoing the courts and demoing the Oakdale Pool. The 864 is the $600,000 cash investment, and it's the Kenwood Pool demo, the rodeo grounds demo, and the clubhouse rehab. That's all that's included in that 864. Any of, the other funding is clearly up to us whether we want to move forward with those projects.
So, the elements that Debbie just described are all instrumental to the tennis proposal that's before us.
Right.
But the demo is listed on option one, it's listed under 864. Unless I'm just reading this wrong?
It is, but it's not included in the 864.
Oh, right, okay. I was on the same page as Commissioner Davis.
It is confusing.
Sorry. The 864 is, the intent is that the city is going to commit the 864, 600 to the tennis project. The optional commitment for option one is the demo of the Sunset Courts, the demo of the Oakdale Courts, and the demo of the Oakdale Pool. Those three ancillary projects are outside of the commitment that we would be making to the tennis project.
Okay. But however, if we want to do those, they would be feasible to do out in, under option one, from the special parks fund balance. Or we could choose to do something else with that money?
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. That was not at all clear. I appreciate the question, Commissioner Davis.
That's another $150,000, so.
Yes.
So, where are we pulling that out of the sky from?
That funding would, in option one, would come from the fund balance of the special parks fund if we chose to do that in the near future. If we didn't choose to do that in the near future, we would still have that in that fund, that balance in that fund to spend on anything else. that balance in that fund to spend on anything else, and then maybe budget those three projects later on within the, within the five hundred thousand dollars parks, or not do them at all. That, that's.
Because we, well, we have to do something with the remaining, with the old courts.
Yeah, that's the.
Put up, put up orange tape that says caution, don't cross, rip them up.
Right.
So. That's, that's really a separate decision from this. I, I would say it's very confusing to have that money included in the presentation when it's not a part of this decision.
Yes.
I, and, and I think that, you know, it speaks to the need for us to um, to get to that strategic planning process because I think this is precisely the kind of conversation that we need to have. Is it a hundred and fifty thousand for um these demolitions? Or, you know, you referenced um the facilities at Centennial Park, which are incredibly important too, or any number of the, the needs that we saw highlighted by staff today in the study session. So, um, so just in terms of Salina Net Generation's proposal today, um, does anyone have?
Yeah.
Questions?
Commissioner Hoppick here. Um, yeah, I think the proposal that Salina Net Generation uh has come to us with is uh considerably more advantageous than I initially would have guessed it to be. If we were to tell them today, thank you, but no thank you, we loo-, we are looking at refurbishing Oakdale Courts, the Jerry Ivy Courts at a considerable expense and getting a, a product that is inferior to what we're looking at, which we have to do. We either need to do some with those courts or we need to shut them down and tell Salina the, the citizens of Salina, thank you, but we're not gonna allow tennis until we figure a way to fund it because uh those courts are becoming dangerous. I think Coach Stewart commented that they kind of joke about it, but it's no joke if you have a child out there playing and somebody twists an ankle or breaks a leg or something on some of those cracks that we've seen before. Also, um, I'm, agree with Commissioner uh Franz on the demolition of the pool. I was somewhat embarrassed as we were negotiating, at least with the county, and telling them how bad their facilities looked and asking them to put millions of dollars into those facilities. And I can't believe they never looked at us and said, why don't you take care of your property? I mean, I was, I just cringed thinking that was the next thing to come out of their mouth. The old shower house needs to be updated. I mean, if you go by and look at it, it's got rotting wood, it's got paint that's coming off of it. That pool is, is being used as a uh facility to store equipment without a, a fence around it to hide it. So um, I think we take care of several problems at, at, at a cost that uh is beneficial to the, to the taxpayer. So um, I am strongly in favor of the Salina Net Generation proposal.
And but, you know, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this proposal because it's something that the city needs and, you know, we are gonna spend some amount of money to either band-aid our current, current uh courts or suffer the, 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 the public disappointment not having courts at all. But I, I would implore our other commissioners and staff to be just as creative in trying to find fixes for our other neighborhoods in town. You know, we have people who live here who aren't necessarily bringing in tournaments, but who still go to work every day and their neighborhoods deserve to have recreational facilities. Uh, Centennial Park being a big one. I mean, we've got a beautiful potential park there. The residents just want a walkway around it, just to walk. Uh, they're not asking us to landscape it. They'd probably landscape it, of course. But we're gonna have to be as creative for people who don't have big political lobbies as we are for this group. This is a, I know the people who've spoken, you know, I, I trust my kids with you anytime. But, you know, I want the same group of people to help us find creative solutions for these other needs in town. Thank you.
Um, do we have a, um, is there action to be taken? Is someone willing to make a motion?
I will. Madam Mayor, uh, I will be approved Resolution twenty-seven-nine-one-three. As my understanding, we don't have to address the financing that we're gonna choose at this point. Is that correct?
Commissioner Hoppick, I second.
Madam Mayor, he referenced the wrong commis-, uh, resolution number because it's misstated in that.
It's twenty-one day seven-nine-three-seven, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
That's correct. Twenty-one, seven-nine-three-seven.
Twenty-one, seven-nine-three-seven.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, as, as, just correct.
And I second, and Commissioner Hoppick, I second it as with the correction being made.
Right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number twenty-one dash seven-nine-three-seven um expressing the intent of the governing body of the City of Salina, Kansas in response to a proposal by Salina Net Generation to enhance the tennis experience in the City of Salina. And before we take a roll call, I would like to thank um both Mr. Renfro and Ms. Angel for being here today and for all the work that you've put in um developing this proposal. And um, I'll be the first to admit, I um, I'm very grateful that the private side has come up with the lion's share of, of, of this um project. And again, thank you very much for doing your part to ensure that tennis is going to be available for uh future Salinans. With that, we will have a roll call, please. Mr. Davis.
I.
Commissioner Franz.
Hi.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Hi.
Commissioner Ryan.
Hi.
Mayor Hodges.
Hi. Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you all very much for your attendance and for taking the time to be with us here today to express your support for the project. Um, alright, take us to item seven-point-two.
Item seven-point-two, discussion on city commission meeting format.
Mr. Wood.
Alright, Mayor and Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. At last week's meeting, uh, we did have a, a short discussion about the city commission format um in response to uh the Saline County Health officials' new public health order. Um, so on the twenty-second, uh, the health order changed um to allow people, to allow um fifty people in indoor spaces. Uh, that's an increase from the fifteen that was allowed in the past. So that does kind of open the door for us to go back to in-person meetings. Um, been down in the, the commission chambers, uh, working through things to try and figure out how we can make all of that work. And it looks like um, there's a couple of options. I, if you, if the commission wants to just go back to regular meetings, so we can certainly accommodate that with social distancing. Can't get a whole lot of people in the room. We can get about twenty-two people in that room with some overflow uh in the next room. So there's not a great deal of space there to do that. Uh, we could do some sort of a hybrid meeting. Um, so we could do a Zoom meeting and an in-person meeting in one oh seven. So that could mean that, uh, you know, if there were commissioners, individuals, commissioners, uh, staff members that weren't comfortable meeting in that room, um, we could accommodate pretty much everybody uh, and have a Zoom meeting and a commission meeting um in person. Um, or we could continue to do uh what we're currently doing today and just keep doing Zoom meeting. It's really a, a decision uh for the commission to make as, as for what they want the meetings to look like in the future. All the technology i- in the room does work. We've, we've actually had uh new cameras upgraded. The audio system is upgraded. Um, we can stream the meeting and, and do Zoom um so that anybody that's on the Zoom call, their, their stuff will come through the audio in the room. Uh, we've tested it a couple of times. We'll continue to test it uh to make sure that everything works um appropriately so that we can conduct meetings that way. We just need to know, I guess, uh, what direction the city commission would like to take. And I'd be happy to answer any questions uh that you have.
Jacob, if, if a commissioner was absent for whatever reason, uh, would his or her picture like, like we're doing now, would it be projected up onto the screen so that other commissioners would have, still have eye-to-eye contact?
Yes, so, so way the, the way that we have it set up or the way we think we can make it work is the screen off to the side will actually be uh the Zoom meeting. So you'll be able to see on that screen, um, anybody that is logged in to the Zoom meeting the same way you can see uh the boxes on the screen right now. So that, off to the side on the, on that screen would be anybody that logs in from the public, anybody that's a city staff member that's doing a presentation. Um, certainly anybody that's from out of town that wanted to do a presentation or anything like that could do, you could do it in that way. So that, that screen would be kind of segregated off to the side uh with um the same thing that you see here today. We could throw up presentations on that screen the same way that we do um now, and members from the public will be able to see that um as well as um the, the commission. And, and actually, um, how that would work is the chambers would also be a box. So you would have the camera that's in the room uh would participate in the Zoom meeting as one of the boxes on the screen. So um, and those cameras can Zoom. Uh, you can, you know, get close to whoever's speaking in the room. Um, so everybody would still be spaced out, but you know, if the individual commissioner's talking, the Zoom, the, the meeting would pan to that person and they would pop up on the screen, on the Zoom screen, just, just as they do today. Um, so technology is actually working in our favor in, in that matter. Everything's kind of up to speed and, and works in a way that we, we think we can make it work.
Another question, with the three broadcasting methods that we've tried, there were delays anywhere from two seconds to twenty-three seconds. In your testing, is that delay, that eliminated?
Uh, so there still will be a delay um for the feed that goes to the access channels. Um, but it will be, it will be, it will be cast, just like this meeting is cast on Zoom. Um, and it will be cast, they will actually cast it on Zoom as well. So there'll be a little bit, not on Zoom, I mean on YouTube. I'm sorry. So there, there will be a little bit of delay if you're watching it on TV. Um, but in our tests, there has not been delay as far as, I mean, it's really the same delay that you have right now with me and you on Zoom is what we've experienced in our testing. So there's not.
It's, it's a problem if we're voting on something and an I or a A comes in after the issue's been closed and move on to the, to the next one. Okay.
Yeah, you, you shouldn't have that issue. And I would anticipate if, if, uh, you know, depending on the choices of commissioners, if we wanna go to a hybrid meeting and, and there was a commissioner that didn't feel comfortable coming in person, we would continue to do it kind of the same way we were doing Zoom. I would anticipate we probably want to do roll call votes in those instances anyway, just so that we're sure, we know who's voting on what, uh, depending on, you know, I mean, if we wanted to do this, uh, you know, you could have anywhere from one commissioner in the room all the way up to all, all five. It's really, depends on your comfort level of being there in the room physically.
I, I guess the reason I'm asking all these questions, I know I won't be here next Monday. So I'm just, I'm gonna get all my options. So I, I can remote in, it would be just like I'm sitting in line.
I guess I'm in that vote today, and uh I have had a, a few cutouts. I almost missed the vote on that last subject, but uh, uh, it's worked pretty well. If, if you can, can rely on your internet wherever you are.
Mr. Wood, I was gonna ask what the person's experience who's participating remotely would be, but I think you kind of addressed that, is that they're gonna, they will be able to see what's transpiring in the commission chambers. They'll be able to see the commissioners as they speak. If somebody's at the podium, they'll be able to see that happen because whoever's operating the cameras hopefully will get panned uh, uh, to the proper location to, to make sure that experience is uh, is good. So thank you.
The, and, and we would have to do the same thing with the raising our digital hands and somebody would have to, you know, monitor and make sure that anybody on the Zoom call has the ability to, to speak um during the appropriate times as we're doing it right now. It's really, really, it's almost the same as what we're doing right now, except for one of the boxes that ends up being in the commission chambers. Um, if that helps to explain how it works.
If, if I could interject one thing, uh, Mr. Wood mentioned is social distancing. And technically, by definition, a mass gathering is when social distancing cannot be observed. So i- it would be permissible to have up to fifty people in a meeting without social distancing. So I, I don't know that that's something that you wanna entertain. The, everything that the staff report uh provides in the way of numbers assumes that we continue to maintain social distancing. But from just a pure health order standpoint, we could have fifty people in that room without social distancing.
So the health, and I, I'm asking out of ignorance right now, the health order does not require social distancing with fifty people in it?
The, the definition of a mass gathering in the health order is um, it, it presumes that you cannot maintain social distancing and then it permits a mass gathering up to fifty people. So um, you could theoretically, I'm not saying that I'm recommending it for our meetings, but you could have up to fifty people without social distancing.
I would not be inclined to do that. I, I would participate remotely uh in that case. But I do, I do recognize that there are people out there, there, you know, two sorts of people. There are those who uh prefer to participate remotely because they're being cautious about the, about the coronavirus. And there are people who absolutely detest meetings on Zoom and they wanna be there in person. And to be honest with you, I'm a mix of those two people. I, I like in-person conversations, but I also recognize that what we're doing now is, is a required accommodation to the circumstances we find ourselves in. So I think if we can proceed with a hybrid approach that, that uh kind of addresses both of those uh, those needs under the health order and given the status of cases in the community, I th- I think we should try to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I would also like to voice my support for a hybrid model. As Commissioner Franz has noted, um, we all have, uh, we all assess risk differently and we're all probably in different categories for having ha- been vaccinated, as are the people that want to interact with us. So um, I would like to see a hybrid, a hybrid model be adopted for the time being.
And I would echo that, just so we're, we're moving towards a, I hopefully unanimous uh decision about that.
Any questions or comments from the public on this issue? I don't think I even see any members of the public on our, on our call at this point. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission and if someone would like to make a motion, I'd accept that.
Mayor, uh, Commissioner Davis, I move to direct staff to prepare to transition to hybrid in-person virtual Zoom meetings beginning on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to prepare to transition to hybrid in-person dash virtual Zoom meetings beginning on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, which is our next commission meeting. I'll, uh, sorry. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Franz.
Hi.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Hi.
Commissioner Ryan.
Hi.
Mayor Hodges.
Hi. Motion passes five-zero. Um, which brings us, we don't have any development business, um, other business. Something that um Commissioner Hoppick mentioned last week was um the potential uh for exemptions for health and fitness centers. And Mr. Schreg provided us an, an update in his city manager report um today, but I thought since it had been brought up at the last meeting, um, perhaps you could just share real briefly um what the status of that bill is.
Actually, I, everything I know is thanks to Deputy City Manager Wood, so I'll defer to him. He had direct conversations on that.
Yeah, so, so that amendment uh was actually to the bill that is uh, is looking at the changes for a property tax lid. And, and it actually, that amendment actually never made it to the floor. Uh, they didn't ever put it forward. I think they got some n- negative press early on, um, so it, it really didn't ever come up. So it's not a concern at this point. Um, and that bill should be heard um in the next couple of weeks. They're gonna turn things around, so we should hear what, what the final is on what's going on with the actual property tax lid part of all of that, uh, but we don't have clarity on that just at this point. But as far as gyms uh go, it's, it's a non-issue at this point.
Gotcha. And as far as what that property tax lid legislation will um contain, we don't, since we don't know that at this time, if it's something that staff feels like we need to respond to, I guess that can be put on our agenda and we.
On occasion, LKM will send out a notice with very short notice and I'll respond as the city manager on behalf of the organization. But if the opportunity, if the timing is such and the opportunity presents itself, we can certainly bring it to you for more formal action.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.